Have you ever been told that your child doesn ' t belong somewhere, that they ' re not good enough, smart enough or capable enough to deserve their place? I am Rebecca Carter and three months ago, I sat in a principal ' s office and heard those exact words about my eight year old daughter Emma. What happened next changed everything I thought I knew about fighting for our children and the power of believing in them when no one else will. Before we jump back in, tell us where you ' re tuning in from, and if this story touches you, make sure you ' re subscribed, because tomorrow, I ' ve saved something extra special for you. The words hit me like a physical blow. Principal Davis, sitting behind his imposing mahogany desk at Riverside Elementary, looked directly into my eyes and delivered a sentence that would haunt me for weeks. Misses Carter, your daughter simply doesn ' t belong at Riverside Elementary. Some children just aren ' t equipped for our academic standards. His tone was matter of fact, clinical even, as if he were reading from a medical diagnosis rather than discussing my child ' s future. There was no hesitation in his voice, no acknowledgement that he was essentially telling a mother that her daughter was a failure. I remember thinking in that moment how easily he said it, how the words rolled off his tongue like he ' d delivered this verdict countless times before. The afternoon sun streamed through his office windows, casting long shadows across the certificates and awards that lined his walls, creating an almost courtroom atmosphere where I felt like the defendant rather than a concerned parent. My name is Rebecca Carter, and I ' ve been fighting battles my entire adult life. As a single mother working double shifts at Rosie ' s Diner on Main Street, I thought I ' d faced every challenge the world could throw at me. I ' d navigated sleepless nights with a colicky baby, figured out how to stretch twenty dollars until payday, and learned to be both mother and father to a little girl who deserved so much more than I felt capable of giving her. But nothing had prepared me for this moment, sitting in that sterile office, being told that my daughter wasn ' t worthy of the education I ' d worked so hard to provide for her. The weight of his words settled into my chest like concrete. This wasn ' t just about Emma ' s grades or her behavior in class. This felt personal, like an attack on everything I ' d tried to build for us. Riverside Elementary wasn ' t just any school. It was the school in Maplewood, the one with the highest test scores, the most college bound graduates, the place where successful families sent their children to get the best possible start in life. Getting Emma enrolled there had felt like winning the lottery, like finally giving her the opportunities I ' d never had. I ' d moved us to a tiny studio apartment on the wrong side of the district boundary just so she could attend Riverside. I ' d worked extra shifts to afford the school supplies, the field trip fees, the countless little expenses that came with being part of a community where other parents seemed to have unlimited resources. Every sacrifice had felt worth it because I believed I was investing in Emma ' s future, giving her access to teachers and programs that would help her reach her potential. Now, sitting across from Principal Davis as he shuffled through papers with Emma ' s name on them, all of that hope was crumbling. The fluorescent lights above us hummed with an irritating persistence, and I could smell the faint scent of industrial disinfectant mixed with the leather of his expensive chair. Everything about the environment reinforced what he was telling me, that Emma and I didn ' t belong in this world of polished surfaces and predetermined expectations. I wanted to argue, to defend my daughter with the fierce protectiveness that had carried me through every other challenge we ' d faced. I wanted to tell him about the Emma I knew at home, the curious little girl who asked a thousand questions a day and turned every mundane activity into an adventure. But something about his certainty, the way he presented Emma ' s supposed failings, as established facts, made me doubt everything I thought I knew about my own child. The manila folder in front of him was thick with documents, each page apparently offering more evidence of Emma ' s inadequacy. I could see red marks on papers, numerical scores that meant nothing to me but clearly told him everything he needed, to know about her worth as a student. The official nature of it all made me feel small and uninformed, like I was being confronted with scientific evidence that contradicted my maternal instincts. Principal Davis continued talking, explaining policies and procedures, outlining Emma ' s deficiencies with the detached professionalism of someone who ' d had this conversation many times before. His voice became background noise as I struggled to process what was happening. This man, who barely knew my daughter, was making pronouncements about her capabilities and her future based on test scores and behavioral reports from teachers who ' d known her for less than a semester. The irony wasn ' t lost on me that I was having this conversation while still wearing my work uniform, the faint smell of coffee and bacon grease probably clinging to my clothes, despite my hurried attempt to freshen up in the restaurant bathroom before driving to the school. My appearance told a story that Principal Davis was clearly reading, single mother, working class, probably uneducated herself, certainly not equipped to advocate effectively for her child ' s educational needs. I thought about Emma that morning, how she ' d carefully packed her backpack and chosen her favorite sweater because it was picture day. She ' d been excited about school, chattering about a science project she was working on, and asking if we could stop by the library after I picked her up. The disconnect between that enthusiastic eight year old and the struggling student being described in this office felt impossible to reconcile. As Principal Davis spoke about transfer options in schools that might be better suited to Emma ' s needs, I realized this wasn ' t really about her academic performance at all. This was about fitting into a predetermined mold, about meeting expectations, that had been set long before anyone had bothered to understand who Emma actually was as a person. The standardized tests, the behavioral checklists, the comparative rankings, they were all ways of sorting children into categories, and Emma had been placed in the category marked doesn ' t belong. The unfairness of it burned in my throat, but I remained silent, unsure of how to fight a system that seemed so certain of its conclusions. I ' d never been good at confronting authority figures, had always felt intimidated by people with titles and degrees and offices like this one. My own educational experience had been unremarkable, cut short by teenage pregnancy and the immediate need to support myself and my child. What authority did I have to question the professional judgment of an experienced educator? But even as I sat there, feeling diminished and defeated, a small voice in the back of my mind whispered that something wasn ' t right about this entire situation. The Emma being described in these reports didn ' t match the daughter I knew, the child who spent hours building elaborate structures with whatever materials she could find, who created detailed drawings of inventions she wanted to build someday, who approached every problem with a creativity that often surprised me with its sophistication. The meeting continued. Documents were presented, signatures were requested, and through it all, I felt like I was watching my daughter ' s future being decided by people who ' d never bothered to truly see her. The weight of my own perceived inadequacies pressed down on me, making it impossible to find the words that might change their minds or challenge their assumptions. I was just a waitress in a polyester uniform, sitting in an office that cost more to furnish than I made in six months, being told that my daughter wasn ' t good enough for their school. Principal Davis ' s voice droned on about alternative educational placements and resources for children with special needs, each word driving home the message that Emma was a problem to be solved rather than a child to be understood. The late afternoon light continued to slant through his windows, and somewhere in the building, I could hear the distant sounds of children laughing during their after school activities, activities that Emma apparently wouldn ' t be participating in much longer. The devastating weight of that moment would stay with me for weeks. The memory of sitting in that chair while being told that my daughter didn ' t belong echoing in my mind every time I looked at her sweet face or watched her tackle her homework with determined concentration. But what I didn ' t know then, what none of us could have predicted, was that this conversation was just the beginning of a journey that would ultimately prove everyone wrong about what my daughter was capable of achieving. I could feel the heat rising in my cheeks as I sat there, acutely aware of how out of place I must have looked in that immaculate office. My polyester uniform from Rosie ' s Diner still carried the lingering aroma of breakfast rush, bacon grease, coffee, and that particular smell of industrial kitchen equipment that never quite washes out of your clothes no matter how many times. You run them through the washing machine in our apartment building ' s basement laundry room. The fabric was wrinkled from my morning shift, and I ' d hastily tucked my hair into a ponytail using an elastic band I ' d found in my car ' s glove compartment. Strands already escaping to frame my face in a way that probably looked disheveled rather than professional. My hands trembled slightly as I gripped the worn leather strap of my purse, a secondhand bag I ' d bought at the thrift store three years ago when Emma started kindergarten because I ' d wanted to look like the other mothers at school events. The purse had seemed sophisticated then, but now, sitting across from Principal Davis in his office filled with mahogany furniture and crystal paperweights, it looked exactly like what it was, a cheap imitation of something nicer, much like how I felt about myself in that moment. The chair I occupied was obviously designed for someone taller than my five foot four frame. My feet barely touched the plush carpet, making me feel like a child called to the principal ' s office rather than a grown woman advocating for her daughter. The leather was soft and expensive beneath me, the kind that probably cost more than I made in a month of double shifts, and it creaked slightly every time I shifted my weight, drawing attention to my discomfort in a way that made me want to disappear entirely. I ' d left work early for this meeting, clocking out at noon and losing four hours of wages I desperately needed. Rent was due in eight days, and I ' d been counting on those hours to make up the difference between what I had Preparing and narrating this story took us a lot of time, so if you are enjoying it, subscribe to our channel. It means a lot to us. Now back to the story. saved and what I owed Misses Patterson, our landlady, who was understanding about late payments but had her own bills to worry about. The decision to leave work hadn ' t been easy. I ' d had to ask Janet, the other day shift waitress, to cover my tables during the lunch rush, which meant she ' d be making the tips I needed to buy groceries for the rest of the week. But when the school calls and uses words like urgent meeting and Emma ' s academic future, you don ' t hesitate. You change out of your coffee stained apron, splash cold water on your face in the employee bathroom, and pray that your fifteen year old Honda Civic starts without the grinding noise it ' s been making lately. You drive across town to the fancy part of Maplewood, where the houses have circular driveways and the lawns look like they belong in magazines. And you try not to think about how your car looks parked next to the B M Ws and Mercedes in the school ' s visitor parking lot. The vulnerability I felt in that moment went deeper than just appearances though. It was the bone deep exhaustion of working sixty hours a week while trying to be everything Emma needed me to be. It was the constant worry about money, about whether I was making the right choices, about whether my love and determination were enough to make up for everything I couldn ' t provide. It was the imposter syndrome of trying to navigate a world I ' d never been prepared for, where other parents seemed to speak a language of educational terminology and standardized test scores that might as well have been foreign to me. My own educational journey had ended abruptly when I was seventeen, and discovered I was pregnant with Emma. I ' d been a decent student, not exceptional but capable, with dreams of maybe going to community college and studying something practical like business or nursing. Those dreams had evaporated the moment I saw two pink lines on a pregnancy test, replaced by the immediate and overwhelming responsibility of figuring out how to support a baby with no degree, no marketable skills, and no family willing to help. Emma ' s father had disappeared before she was born, leaving behind nothing but a cell phone number that went straight to voicemail within a month and promises he ' d never intended to keep. I ' d learned to stop expecting anything from him, but the absence of his support, financial and emotional, was a constant reminder of how alone Emma and I were in the world. There were no grandparents to help with childcare, no aunts or uncles to provide backup when I was sick or needed someone to attend school events I couldn ' t get time off work to see. The isolation of single motherhood had been particularly acute during Emma ' s early years, when other mothers at playgroups and preschool pickup seemed to exist in pairs or groups, sharing car pools and playdates and the casual intimacy of friendship. I ' d tried to connect, but the gulf between their lives and mine felt unbridgeable. They talked about yoga classes and book clubs and weekend trips to their lake houses, while I calculated whether I could afford to buy Emma new shoes or if we could make her current pair last another month. Sitting in Principal Davis ' s office, all of those insecurities came flooding back with renewed intensity. The diplomas on his wall seemed to mock my own lack of formal education, while the family photos on his desk, beautiful wife, two well dressed children, vacation shots from what looked like European cities, painted a picture of stability and success that felt impossibly foreign to my own experience of struggling to keep the lights on and putting food on the table. My appearance told a story I couldn ' t hide. No matter how much I ' d wanted to present myself as a competent, engaged parent, the slight yellowing of my fingernails from handling so many coffee cups, the calluses on my hands from years of carrying, heavy trays and wiping down countless tables, the premature lines around my eyes from stress and too little sleep, all of it marked me as someone from outside this world of privilege and opportunity. The irony wasn ' t lost on me that I was being judged for my daughter ' s supposed inadequacies while sitting there in clothes that smelled like industrial kitchen equipment, my hair escaping from its hastily constructed ponytail, my hands showing the wear of physical labor that most of the other parents at Riverside Elementary had probably never experienced. The visual contrast between myself and the polished professionalism of Principal Davis ' s office seemed to validate whatever assumptions he ' d already made about Emma ' s home environment and her prospects for academic success. But beneath the surface embarrassment and self consciousness, there was something else, a growing anger that I was trying hard to suppress. The assumption that my appearance or my job or my bank account balance had anything to do with Emma ' s intelligence or potential felt fundamentally unfair. I might not have advanced degrees or expensive clothes, but I ' d been Emma ' s primary teacher for eight years, watching her grow and learn and develop in ways that no standardized test could measure. The vulnerability of that moment extended beyond my own discomfort to a deeper fear about what this meeting might mean for Emma ' s future. If Principal Davis was right, if she really wasn ' t capable of succeeding at Riverside Elementary, what did that say about all the sacrifices I ' d made to get her there? What did it mean for the dreams I ' d harbored of her going to college, of having opportunities I ' d never had, of breaking the cycle of financial struggle that had defined my own adult life? The weight of my perceived failures as a parent pressed down on me as Principal Davis continued to outline Emma ' s supposed deficiencies. Every criticism felt like an indictment of my parenting. Every suggestion that she needed additional support or alternative placement reinforced the message that I hadn ' t been enough for her, that my love and effort and determination hadn ' t been sufficient to prepare her for the academic demands of a quality education. I thought about all the evenings we ' d spent at our tiny kitchen table, Emma working on homework while I prepared for my next shift or tried to catch up on laundry or figure out how to stretch our grocery budget for another week. I ' d helped her with math problems that stretched the limits of my own knowledge, looked up words in a dictionary we ' d bought at a yard sale, encouraged her when she struggled with reading assignments that seemed too advanced for her age. The apartment where Emma and I lived was a far cry from the suburban homes where most of her classmates probably did their homework. Our kitchen table was a card table I ' d found at a thrift store, covered with a vinyl tablecloth that was easy to wipe clean, but looked nothing like the solid wood dining sets I saw in the home decor magazines at the grocery store checkout. Emma ' s bedroom was actually half of our living room, divided by a folding screen I ' d bought to give her some privacy, and her desk was a plastic storage container turned upside down with a piece of plywood on top. But despite the makeshift nature of our living situation, I ' d tried to create an environment where learning was valued and encouraged. The walls of our small space were covered with Emma ' s artwork, her spelling tests with gold stars, photos of the two of us at free community events like library storytimes and park festivals, our bookshelf, constructed from boards and cinder blocks, was filled with books from library sales and donations from neighbors, creating a small library that Emma had read through multiple times. None of that seemed to matter though. As I sat in that office listening to Principal Davis enumerate the ways Emma was falling short of Riverside Elementary ' s standards. The disconnect between the curious creative child I knew at home and the struggling student being described in these reports felt impossible to reconcile. But I lacked the confidence or expertise to challenge his professional assessment. The fluorescent lighting overhead cast harsh shadows across the room, making me squint slightly and adding to my growing headache. I ' d been up until two in the morning the night before, working on a presentation for the diner ' s new menu items that My manager had asked me to prepare, and the exhaustion was beginning to catch up with me. The combination of too little sleep, too much stress, and the emotional weight of this conversation was making it difficult to focus on everything Principal Davis was saying. My purse felt heavy in my lap, weighed down by the detritus of a busy, single mother ' s life, work schedules and grocery lists and Emma ' s emergency contact forms, a small bottle of generic ibuprofen and a handful of dollar bills that represented the tips from yesterday ' s lunch shift. The contents of that purse told their own story about the constant juggling act of our daily existence. The way every moment of my life was scheduled around work and Emma ' s needs, leaving little time for the kind of parental involvement that schools like Riverside Elementary seem to expect and value. I could feel Principal Davis watching me as he spoke, probably noting my obvious discomfort and drawing his own conclusions about what it meant for Emma ' s educational prospects. The power dynamic in that room was unmistakable. He held all the authority, all the expertise, all the ability to make decisions about my daughter ' s future, while I sat there feeling like a supplicant hoping for mercy rather than a parent with legitimate concerns and insights about her own child. The shame of that moment would stay with me for weeks afterward, the memory of feeling so small and inadequate in the face of institutional authority. But what I didn ' t realize then, what I couldn ' t have predicted as I sat there absorbed in my own vulnerability and self doubt, was that this feeling of powerlessness was about to be challenged in a way that would change everything I thought I knew about advocating for Emma and fighting for her place in the world. The intimidating environment. Riverside Elementary School existed in a different universe from anything I ' d experienced in my own educational journey. The building itself was a monument to educational aspiration, constructed of warm red brick, with white columns that belonged on a college campus rather than an elementary school. Massive oak trees lined the circular driveway, their branches creating a canopy that filtered the afternoon sunlight into dancing patterns across the manicured lawn. Everything about the exterior communicated prestige, tradition, and the kind of resources that only came with significant community investment and parental involvement. The parking lot told its own story of economic privilege. Row after row of luxury vehicles gleamed in the afternoon sun, Mercedes sedans, BMW SUVs, and Tesla models that cost more than I ' d make in three years of double shifts at the diner. My fifteen year old Honda Civic, with its rust spots and passenger door that required a firm shoulder to close properly, looked like it had wandered into the wrong neighborhood. I ' d parked as far from the main entrance as possible, hoping to minimize the contrast between my transportation and that of the other parents. But even tucked away in a corner spot, the car seemed to announce my outsider status to anyone who cared to notice. Walking through the main entrance was like stepping into a luxury hotel rather than a public school. The lobby featured polished marble floors that reflected the light from an enormous crystal chandelier hanging from the two story ceiling. The walls were lined with glass display cases showcasing student artwork, academic awards, and photographs from various school events, all professionally mounted and labeled with brass plaques that gave the whole space the feel of a museum dedicated to educational excellence. The school ' s main office occupied a position of prominence just off the lobby, its glass walls offering a view of the reception area where parents and visitors waited on upholstered chairs that looked more expensive than any furniture in my apartment. The reception desk was staffed by Misses Morrison, a woman in her sixties who wore the kind of coordinated outfit and careful makeup that suggested she ' d never worked a job where appearance wasn ' t part of the daily uniform. Her smile was professionally polite but distant, the practiced expression of someone accustomed to dealing with parents from a certain social stratum. I ' d arrived twenty minutes early for my appointment with Principal Davis, partly because I ' d misjudged the traffic, and partly because I wanted time to collect myself before facing whatever conversation awaited me. The waiting area featured current issues of magazines I ' d never heard of, publications about private schools and college preparation, and family vacation destinations that required passports. The coffee table displayed brochures for enrichment, programs and summer camps that cost more than my monthly rent, casual reminders of the world Emma ' s classmates inhabited outside of school hours. The other parents who came and went during my wait, moved through the space with the confidence of people who belonged there. They wore clothes that looked effortless but expensive, carried leather handbags that weren ' t desperately trying to hide years of wear, and spoke to the office staff with the easy familiarity of regular customers at an exclusive restaurant. Their children when they appeared looked equally polished. Backpacks that weren ' t hand me downs, shoes that hadn ' t been resold multiple times, haircuts that clearly came from salons rather than home attempts with drugstore scissors. The contrast couldn ' t have been more stark with my own appearance and circumstances. My work uniform from Rosie ' s Diner had seemed appropriate when I ' d left that morning, clean, pressed, professional within the context of food service. But In the elegant environment of Riverside Elementary, it marked me as clearly as if I ' d worn a sign announcing my working class status. The polyester fabric that was practical for surviving eight hour shifts on my feet suddenly felt cheap and synthetic, while the comfortable shoes I needed for carrying heavy trays looked clunky and unfashionable compared to the leather flats. and stylish boots worn by the other mothers. The intimidation wasn ' t just about appearances though. It was about belonging to a community that operated according to rules and expectations I ' d never been taught to understand. The bulletin boards near the main office advertised fundraising events with ticket prices that represented a significant portion of my weekly income, silent auctions and wine tastings and charity galas where parents were expected to bid on vacation, packages and restaurant gift certificates as casually as I might decide whether to buy name brand or generic cereal at the grocery store. Parent volunteer opportunities were posted with the assumption that mothers had flexible schedules and available time to spend their days supporting classroom activities, chaperoning field trips, and organizing elaborate themed parties for every holiday and celebration throughout the school year. The coordinator positions required skills I ' d never developed, event planning, graphic design, social media management, and the time commitments assumed a level of availability that was impossible for someone working multiple jobs to pay rent and keep food on the table. Even the school ' s physical layout reinforced the sense that this was a place designed for families with resources and cultural capital I ' d never possessed. The hallways were lined with displays of student work that clearly reflected extensive parental involvement, science fair projects that looked professionally constructed, book reports presented with elaborate visual aids, art projects that incorporated materials and techniques that suggested significant investment in supplies and instruction beyond what the school provided. The library, visible through glass doors, as I passed on my way to Principal Davis ' s office, looked like something from a private university rather than a public elementary school. Floor to ceiling windows provided natural light for reading areas furnished with comfortable chairs and small tables, while computer stations offered access to technology that was clearly state of the art. The collection itself appeared extensive, with both physical books and digital resources that suggested a budget far beyond what I remembered from my own elementary school experience. Walking through those hallways, I felt the weight of every assumption being made about Emma, based on her family ' s economic circumstances. The school ' s environment communicated clear expectations about parental involvement, home support for learning, and access to enrichment opportunities that extended far beyond the regular school day. Students were obviously expected to arrive each morning having completed homework and dedicated study spaces, wearing clothes that reflected their family ' s ability to prioritize appearance and presentation, carrying supplies that never seemed to run out or wear down from overuse. The classroom doors I passed offered glimpses of learning environments that looked nothing like the schools I ' d attended as a child. Interactive whiteboards had replaced traditional blackboards. Learning centers were stocked with manipulatives and educational games that clearly represented significant investments, and bulletin boards displayed work that reflected not just student effort but access to resources, computers for research, printers for presentations, art supplies for creative projects that went far beyond basic construction paper and crayons. Principal Davis ' s office occupied a corner location that spoke to his position within the school ' s hierarchy. The brass, name played I ' d arrived twenty minutes early for my appointment with Principal Davis, partly because I ' d misjudged the traffic, and partly because I wanted time to collect myself before facing whatever conversation awaited me. The waiting area featured current issues of magazines I ' d never heard of, publications about private schools and college preparation, and family vacation destinations that required passports. The coffee table displayed brochures for enrichment, programs and summer camps that cost more than my monthly rent, casual reminders of the world Emma ' s classmates inhabited outside of school hours. The other parents who came and went during my wait moved through the space with the confidence of people who belonged there. They wore clothes that looked effortless but expensive, carried leather handbags that weren ' t desperately trying to hide years of wear, and spoke to the office staff with the easy familiarity of regular customers at an exclusive restaurant. Their children, when they appeared, looked equally polished. Backpacks that weren ' t hand me downs, shoes that hadn ' t been resold multiple times, haircuts that clearly came from salons rather than home attempts with drugstore scissors. The contrast couldn ' t have been more stark with my own appearance and circumstances. My work uniform from Rosie ' s Diner had seemed appropriate when I ' d left that morning, clean, pressed, professional within the context of food service. But in the elegant environment of Riverside Elementary, it marked me as clearly as if I ' d worn a sign announcing my working class status. The polyester fabric that was practical for surviving eight hour shifts on my feet suddenly felt cheap and synthetic, while the comfortable shoes I needed for carrying heavy trays looked clunky and unfashionable compared to the leather flats and stylish boots worn by the other mothers. The intimidation wasn ' t just about appearances though. It was about belonging to a community that operated according to rules and expectations I ' d never been taught to understand. The bulletin boards near the main office advertised fundraising events with ticket prices that represented a significant portion of my weekly income, silent auctions and wine tastings and charity galas where parents were expected to bid on vacation, packages and restaurant gift certificates as casually as I might decide whether to buy name brand or generic cereal at the grocery store. Parent volunteer opportunities were posted with the assumption that mothers had flexible schedules and available time to spend their days supporting classroom activities, chaperoning field trips, and organizing elaborate themed parties for every holiday and celebration throughout the school year. The coordinator positions required skills I ' d never developed, event planning, graphic design, social media management, and the time commitments assumed a level of availability that was impossible for someone working multiple jobs to pay rent and keep food on the table. Even the school ' s physical layout reinforced the sense that this was a place designed for families with resources and cultural capital I ' d never possessed. The hallways were lined with displays of student work that clearly reflected extensive parental involvement, science fair projects that looked professionally constructed, book reports presented with elaborate visual aids, art projects that incorporated materials and techniques that suggested significant investment in supplies and instruction beyond what the school provided. The library, visible through glass doors, as I passed on my way to Principal Davis ' s office, looked like something from a private university rather than a public elementary school. Floor to ceiling windows provided natural light for reading areas furnished with comfortable chairs and small tables, while computer stations offered access to technology that was clearly state of the art. The collection itself appeared extensive, with both physical books and digital resources that suggested a budget far beyond what I remembered from my own elementary school experience. Walking through those hallways, I felt the weight of every assumption being made about Emma, based on her family ' s economic circumstances. The school ' s environment communicated clear expectations about parental involvement, home support for learning, and access to enrichment opportunities that extended far beyond the regular school day. Students were obviously expected to arrive each morning having completed homework and dedicated study spaces, wearing clothes that reflected their family ' s ability to prioritize appearance and presentation, carrying supplies that never seemed to run out or wear down from overuse. The classroom doors I passed offered glimpses of learning environments that looked nothing like the schools I ' d attended as a child. Interactive whiteboards had replaced traditional blackboards, learning centers were stocked with manipulatives and educational games that clearly represented significant investments, and bulletin boards displayed work that reflected not just student effort but access to resources, computers for research, printers for presentations, art supplies for creative projects that went far beyond basic construction paper and crayons. Principal Davis ' s office occupied a corner location that spoke to his position within the school ' s hierarchy. The brass nameplate on his door was engraved rather than simply printed, and the door itself was solid wood rather than the hollow core versions I was accustomed to seeing in most institutional settings. Even the waiting area outside his office featured touches that reinforced the school ' s upscale atmosphere, framed photographs of school events, a small side table with current educational magazines, and comfortable seating that invited parents to relax rather than simply endure the waiting process. The secretary who managed Principal Davis ' s schedule operated from a workspace that looked more like a corporate executive ' s assistant station than a typical school office setup. Her computer monitor was large and modern. Her desk accessories appeared to be made of actual wood rather than pressed particle board, and even her telephone looked like an expensive business model rather than the basic institutional equipment I ' d expected to see. But perhaps the most intimidating aspect of the entire environment was the way it made me acutely aware of how unprepared I was to navigate this world on Emma ' s behalf. The other parents who moved through these spaces clearly understood the unwritten rules and expectations that governed interactions with teachers and administrators. They knew which questions to ask about their children ' s progress, how to request specific accommodations or enrichment opportunities, and how to position themselves as partners in their children ' s educational journey rather than supplicants hoping for basic consideration. My own lack of experience with this level of educational sophistication left me feeling like I was trying to communicate in a foreign language where I only knew a few basic phrases. The terminology that teachers and administrators used casually, differentiated instruction, assessment rubrics, learning objectives, might as well have been technical jargon from a field I ' d never studied. The assumption that parents would understand concepts like standardized test percentiles and grade level expectations left me struggling to follow conversations about Emma ' s progress and needs. The intimidation factor was compounded by my awareness that every interaction was being evaluated not just for its content, but for what it revealed about my competence as a parent and advocate for my child. The way I dressed, the questions I asked, the vocabulary I used, the level of familiarity I displayed with educational concepts. All of it was being processed and filed away as evidence of Emma ' s home environment and the likelihood that her family could provide the kind of support that Riverside Elementary expected from its students ' parents. Standing in that hallway outside Principal Davis ' s office, waiting for Misses Morrison to announce that he was ready to see me, I felt the full weight of my inadequacy in this environment. The polished surfaces around me seemed to reflect back every aspect of my working class background, every limitation in my own educational experience, every way in which I fell short of the parental ideal that this school seemed to expect and deserve. But even as I absorbed the intimidating atmosphere of Riverside Elementary, there was a part of me that refused to be completely overwhelmed by the display of institutional authority and cultural capital surrounding me. Emma belonged here not because of my ability to navigate this world, but because she was smart and curious and deserving of the best education available to her. The challenge I faced wasn ' t proving that I belonged in this environment. It was proving that Emma did, regardless of the circumstances that had brought us here. East. The systematic evaluation. The manila folder that Principal Davis opened with such deliberate ceremony contained what felt like Emma ' s entire academic life reduced to numbers, charts, and clinical observations that bore no resemblance to the child I knew. The folder itself was thick, bulging with documents that had been collecting for months while I remained unaware that my daughter was being systematically evaluated, categorized, and apparently found wanting according to metrics. I didn ' t understand and standards I hadn ' t been informed existed. Principal Davis began by spreading the contents across his expansive desk with the methodical precision of a prosecutor laying out evidence. Each document was placed with careful attention to organization. Test scores in one pile, behavioral reports in another, teacher evaluations forming a third stack of papers that seemed to grow more damning with each addition. The visual presentation was clearly intended to demonstrate the thoroughness and objectivity of the school ' s assessment. Process. But to me it felt like watching my daughter being dissected by people who had never bothered to understand her as a whole person. The standardized test results were presented first, a series of numbers and percentiles that meant nothing to me, but apparently told Principal Davis everything he needed to know about Emma ' s intellectual capacity and academic potential. Her math scores were highlighted in yellow, indicating performance below grade level, while her reading comprehension numbers were circled in red ink that seemed to emphasize their inadequacy. The testing coordinator had attached detailed explanations of what each score meant in terms of Emma ' s comparative ranking among her peers, but the language was so technical and clinical that I struggled to connect these abstract measurements to my daughter ' s actual abilities and interests. What the test scores didn ' t capture, couldn ' t possibly measure, was the way Emma approached problems at home with creativity and persistence that often surprised me with its sophistication. They didn ' t account for the fact that she ' d taught herself to use my phone ' s calculator to figure out how much change we should receive at the grocery store, or that she ' d created an elaborate system for organizing her small collection of books by genre and author. The numbers on those pages reduced her intellectual curiosity to a series of deficits without acknowledging the different ways intelligence could manifest in an eight year old mind. The behavioral assessments were perhaps even more troubling, filled with observations that painted Emma as a disruptive and disengaged student who struggled to follow classroom routines and integrate with her peer group. Misses Henderson, her third grade teacher, had documented instances of Emma staring out the window during instruction time, failing to raise her hand to participate in class discussions, and appearing to daydream during independent work periods. These behaviors were interpreted as evidence of attention deficits and possible learning disabilities that required intervention and support beyond what the regular classroom environment could provide. Reading these clinical descriptions of Emma ' s classroom behavior, I felt a growing disconnect between the child being described and the daughter I interacted with every day at home. The Emma I knew was endlessly curious, asking questions about everything from how airplanes stayed in the air to why some people had different colored skin. She was observant to a fault, noticing details in our neighborhood that I walked past without seeing, remembering conversations and events with startling accuracy weeks after they occurred. The suggestion that she was disengaged or inattentive seemed particularly puzzling given how intensely she focused on activities that captured her interest. I ' d watched her spend hours constructing elaborate structures with whatever material she could find, cardboard boxes, empty containers, craft supplies we ' d gathered from dollar store purchases. Her concentration during these projects was absolute, and the complexity of what she created often left me wondering where she ' d learned the engineering principles she seemed to apply instinctively. Misses Henderson ' s reports also noted Emma ' s reluctance to participate in group activities and her tendency to work independently rather than collaborating with classmates on assigned projects. This behavior was flagged as potentially problematic, suggesting difficulties with social integration that might require counseling or specialized intervention. The implication was that Emma ' s preference for working alone indicated some form of social deficit rather than simply a different learning style or personality trait. What these behavioral assessments failed to consider was the possibility that Emma ' s apparent disengagement might reflect boredom rather than inability, or that her reluctance to participate in group discussions might stem from being ahead of her classmates rather than behind them. The assumption seemed to be that any deviation from expected classroom behavior indicated a problem with the child rather than a potential mismatch between the child ' s needs and the instructional environment being provided. The academic work samples included in Emma ' s file presented another layer of evidence that supposedly supported the school ' s concerns about her performance and potential. Math worksheets were marked with red ink where problems had been left incomplete, reading comprehension exercises showed answers that were technically correct but lacked the elaboration that teachers were apparently looking for, and creative writing assignments were noted as being too brief or not meeting specific formatting requirements. Looking at Emma ' s actual work though, I could see evidence of thinking that went beyond what the assignments seemed to be measuring. Her math problems, while sometimes incomplete, showed innovative approaches to solving complex calculations. That suggested she understood the underlying concepts even when she didn ' t follow the prescribed methodology. Her reading responses, though brief, demonstrated comprehension that went deeper than simple recall of plot details, often including insights about character motivation or thematic elements that seemed sophisticated for her age level. The creative writing samples were particularly revealing in ways that the teacher ' s comments seemed to miss entirely. Emma ' s stories, while shorter than the assigned length requirements, were filled with imaginative details and plot developments that showed remarkable creativity and emotional intelligence. Her characters faced realistic problems and found solutions that reflected a level of empathy and problem solving ability that impressed me every time she shared her writing at home. Principal Davis also presented attendance records that highlighted Emma ' s occasional tardiness and several days she ' d missed school during my attempts to manage childcare around my work schedule. These absences were presented as additional evidence of instability in Emma ' s home environment and lack of prioritization of her education. The clinical documentation made no allowance for the practical realities of single parenthood, the challenges of managing transportation when your car breaks down, or the impossible choices between missing work to care for a sick child and sending her to school when she needed to stay home. The cumulative effect of this systematic evaluation was to create a portrait of a struggling student from a chaotic home environment who lacked the basic skills and support system necessary for academic Success at Riverside Elementary. Every piece of evidence was presented as objective data that supported predetermined conclusions about Emma ' s capabilities and prospects, leaving no room for alternative interpretations or consideration of factors that might not fit neatly into standardized assessment categories. What struck me most forcefully as Principal Davis methodically reviewed each document was how thoroughly this evaluation process had reduced Emma to a collection of deficits and problems to be solved. The child who spent her evenings at our kitchen table working on homework with determined concentration, who asked thoughtful questions about the books we read together from the library, who created elaborate games and stories that entertained both of us during our quiet evenings at home, that Emma was nowhere to be found in these official documents. The systematic nature of the evaluation felt particularly insidious because it presented itself as comprehensive and objective while actually capturing only a narrow slice of Emma ' s abilities and potential. The standardized tests measured specific types of academic skills while ignoring others. The behavioral observations focused on compliance and conformity while overlooking creativity and independent thinking, and the work samples were judged according to rigid criteria that didn ' t account for different approaches to learning and problem solving. Perhaps most troubling was the way this systematic evaluation had apparently been ongoing for months without any meaningful communication with me about concerns or possible interventions that might help Emma succeed in the classroom environment. The documentation suggested a process of observation, assessment, and conclusion drawing that had proceeded without parental input or collaboration, as if Emma ' s educational future could be determined through clinical analysis without consideration of insights from the person who knew her best. The power dynamics inherent in this evaluation process were unmistakable. Principal Davis and the teaching staff positioned themselves as objective experts whose professional judgment about Emma ' s abilities and needs was beyond question, while I was cast in the role of a parent who might provide emotional support but couldn ' t be expected to contribute meaningful insights about my own child ' s learning style, interests, or potential. As Principal Davis continued to work through the contents of Emma ' s file, highlighting particular scores and observations that supported his conclusions about her unsuitability for Riverside Elementary ' s academic environment, I felt increasingly frustrated by the disconnect between this clinical portrait and the real child I knew. The systematic evaluation had captured data points and behavioral observations while missing entirely the spark of curiosity, the creative problem solving ability, and the intellectual engagement that I witnessed every day in my interactions with Emma at home. The crushing assumption, the moment that shattered whatever composure I ' d managed to maintain, came when Principal Davis leaned back in his leather chair, steepled his fingers together in a gesture that suggested he was about to deliver wisdom rather than judgment, and spoke the words that would echo in my mind for weeks afterward. His voice carried the tone of someone accustomed to having his pronouncements accepted without question, a professional educator sharing insights that he clearly believed were both obvious and irrefutable based on his years of experience and expertise in assessing children ' s academic potential. The truth is, Misses Carter, he began, pausing to let the weight of his authority settle into the space between us. Children from economically disadvantaged backgrounds often struggle to keep pace with the academic demands and social expectations of a school like Riverside Elementary. Emma ' s difficulties aren ' t unusual or unexpected given her circumstances. The clinical detachment in his voice as he reduced my daughter ' s entire life experience to a sociological category felt like a physical blow. He continued speaking, apparently unaware of the impact his words were having, explaining with the patient tone of someone educating a parent who clearly lacked the sophistication to understand these matters without assistance. Single parent. Households, particularly those where the parent works multiple jobs, frequently lack the stability and resources necessary to provide adequate academic support at home. Children in these situations often arrive at school without having been exposed to the kind of enrichment activities and educational experiences that their peers take for granted. Each word felt carefully chosen to sound objective and professional, while delivering a devastating assessment of our family ' s fundamental inadequacy. Principal Davis wasn ' t just critiquing Emma ' s academic performance, he was systematically dismantling my worth as a mother and the value of everything I ' d tried to provide for my daughter despite our financial limitations and unconventional family structure. The research is quite clear on these matters, he continued, reaching for a document from Emma ' s file as if academic studies could somehow justify the assumptions he was making about our lives. Children from unstable home environments typically exhibit the same patterns we ' re seeing with Emma: inconsistent academic performance, difficulty with peer interactions, problems maintaining focus and engagement in structured learning environments. The way he spoke about unstable home environments made it clear that he was referring specifically to families like ours, where love and effort and sacrifice apparently counted for nothing if they weren ' t packaged in the traditional two parent, middle class structure that schools like Riverside Elementary expected and valued. The implication was that Emma ' s struggles weren ' t the result of any failure on the school ' s part to understand or accommodate her individual needs, but rather the inevitable consequence of being raised in circumstances that were inherently damaging to her educational prospects. What Emma needs, Principal Davis concluded with the air of someone offering a generous solution to an unfortunate problem, is an educational environment that ' s better equipped to address the challenges faced by students from her demographic background. Lincoln Elementary across town has extensive experience working with children from single parent families and lower socio economic situations. They have specialized programs and resources specifically designed for students who need additional support. The suggestion that Emma should be transferred to Lincoln Elementary wasn ' t presented as a punishment or failure, but rather as a compassionate recognition of reality. Principal Davis clearly believed he was being helpful by directing us toward a school that was more appropriate for children like Emma, students whose family circumstances made them unsuitable for the rigorous academic environment and high expectations that Riverside Elementary maintained for its student body. What made his assumptions particularly painful was the confidence with which he delivered them, as if my daughter ' s educational future could be determined by checking boxes on a demographic survey rather than actually getting to know her as an individual. The categories he ' d placed us in, single mother, working class, economically disadvantaged, apparently told him everything he needed to know about Emma ' s potential and our family ' s ability to support her academic success. The crushing weight of his assumptions extended beyond just academic performance to encompass every aspect of our lives together. The evenings Emma and I spent reading library books on our secondhand couch apparently didn ' t count as educational enrichment because they didn ' t take place in a dedicated study room with built in bookshelves and professional lighting. The conversations we had during our walks through the neighborhood where Emma asked endless questions about everything she observed were dismissed as were dismissed as inadequate compared to the structured learning experiences that other families could afford to provide. The creative projects Emma worked on at our kitchen table using materials we ' d gathered from dollar stores and recycling bins were implicitly devalued because they didn ' t involve expensive art supplies or professional instruction. The fact that she ' d taught herself to use basic computer programs on the library ' s public terminals didn ' t matter because she didn ' t have unlimited internet access and her own laptop at home. Every effort I ' d made to stimulate Emma ' s curiosity and support her learning was rendered meaningless by the assumption that poverty automatically translated to educational neglect. Principal Davis ' s certainty about Emma ' s limitations based on our family structure felt particularly brutal because it ignored completely the strength and resilience that single motherhood had required me to develop. The organizational skills I ' d learned from managing work schedules and childcare arrangements, the creativity I ' d developed in stretching limited resources to meet Emma ' s needs, the problem solving abilities I ' d honed through years of handling, every crisis and challenge on my own. None of that registered as valuable life experience that might actually benefit my daughter ' s development. The assumption that working multiple jobs somehow disqualified me as a parent capable of providing adequate support for Emma ' s education felt especially unfair given the sacrifices I ' d made specifically to prioritize her academic success. I ' d moved us to a smaller, more expensive apartment just to access Riverside Elementary ' s district, giving up space and comfort to ensure Emma could attend what was supposed to be the best school available to her. I ' d turned down higher paying evening shifts at the diner so I could be home to help with homework and maintain some semblance of a regular bedtime routine. But none of those sacrifices mattered to Principal Davis, who had apparently decided that Emma ' s academic fate was sealed by circumstances beyond her control rather than influenced by the choices and efforts of the people who loved her most. The research he cited so confidently might have identified statistical patterns among certain demographic groups, but it couldn ' t account for individual variation or the impact of a parent ' s determination to break cycles of limitation and create opportunities that hadn ' t existed in their own childhood. The most crushing aspect of his assumptions was the way they foreclosed possibilities for Emma ' s future without giving her a real chance to demonstrate what she was capable of achieving. Instead of looking for ways to build on her strengths or address specific challenges she might be facing in the classroom environment. The school had apparently decided that her family background made her unsuitable for their academic program and expectations. The suggestion that she ' d be better served at Lincoln Elementary with its specialized programs for students from challenging backgrounds felt like educational segregation disguised as compassionate accommodation. The implication was that children like Emma belonged with other children like Emma, separated from their more advantaged peers who deserved access to rigorous academics and high expectations rather than being held back by students who needed additional support and accommodation. The casual way Principal Davis dismissed Emma ' s potential based on statistical generalizations about children from single parent households revealed a fundamental misunderstanding of what poverty actually looked like in our daily lives. He seemed to envision a chaotic environment where education wasn ' t valued, where parents were too overwhelmed or disinterested to provide meaningful support for their children ' s learning. The reality of our situation was far more complex and in many ways more educationally rich than his assumptions allowed for. Our small apartment might not have had a dedicated homework space with perfect lighting and ergonomic furniture, but it was filled with books we ' d collected from library sales and donations, educational games we ' d found at thrift stores, and art supplies we ' d accumulated gradually through careful budgeting and creative resourcefulness. The walls were covered with Emma ' s drawings and writings, maps we ' d printed from the library ' s computers, and educational posters we ' d made together using poster board and markers from the dollar store. The assumption that economic disadvantage automatically translated to educational neglect completely ignored the deliberate choices I ' d made to prioritize Emma ' s intellectual development despite our financial limitations. I ' d canceled cable television subscriptions to redirect that, money toward educational materials and experiences. I ' d worked extra shifts specifically to save money for field trips and school supplies. I ' d spent countless hours researching free educational resources available through the public library, community centers, and online platforms that didn ' t require expensive equipment or subscription fees. Principal Davis ' s certainty about Emma ' s limitations also overlooked the resilience and adaptability that children from working class families often developed as a result of their circumstances. Emma had learned to be independent and self directed because my work schedule required her to manage certain responsibilities on her own. She ' d developed empathy and social awareness from our interactions with people from diverse backgrounds in our neighborhood and at the community centers where we spent time during school breaks. The experiences that Principal Davis apparently viewed as deficits, living in a small apartment, shopping at thrift stores, relying on public transportation, had actually provided Emma with perspectives and skills that many of her more privileged classmates might never have the opportunity to develop. She understood the value of money because she ' d watched me budget carefully for necessities. She appreciated educational opportunities because she knew they weren ' t guaranteed or unlimited. She ' d learned to find joy and learning in simple experiences because we ' d had to be creative about entertainment and enrichment activities. The research that Principal Davis cited so confidently as evidence of Emma ' s inevitable academic failure failed to account for protective factors that could buffer children from the negative effects of economic stress. The strong relationship Emma and I had developed, the clear expectations I ' d established about the importance of education, the consistent routines we ' d maintained despite challenging circumstances, all of these elements had been shown in other studies to support academic success regardless of family income level. But perhaps most infuriating about Principal Davis ' s assumptions was the way they reduced Emma to a statistical probability rather than recognizing her as an individual child with unique strengths, interests, and potential. The standardized test scores and behavioral assessments that formed the basis of his conclusions captured only a narrow slice of her abilities, ignoring the creativity, curiosity, and problem solving skills that I witnessed every day in our interactions at home. The assumption that she needed to be segregated into a school with specialized programs for students from challenging backgrounds felt like educational apartheid designed to maintain the exclusivity of schools like Riverside Elementary, while appearing to offer compassionate alternatives for children who didn ' t fit the preferred demographic profile. The message was clear: Emma didn ' t belong in an environment with high academic expectations because her family circumstances had predetermined her as incapable of meeting those standards. What Principal Davis couldn ' t see, or perhaps chose not to acknowledge, was that Emma ' s struggles in the classroom might have more to do with the school ' s failure to recognize and accommodate her learning style than with any inherent deficits in her intellectual capacity or home environment. The teaching methods that worked effectively for some students might not be optimal for others, regardless of their family ' s economic status or structure. The emphasis on standardized assessments and behavioral compliance that seemed to drive decision making at Riverside Elementary might actually work against students who were creative, independent thinkers, or who learned differently than their peers. Emma ' s tendency to work independently, which had been flagged as problematic in her behavioral assessments, might actually indicate advanced thinking skills and self direction rather than social deficits or attention problems. The assumption that children from single parent families automatically lacked adequate support for learning also ignored the reality that many two parent households provided less educational enrichment than what Emma received from our focused, intentional interactions. The quality of parent child relationships and the value placed on education mattered more than family structure or income level. But those factors were apparently too complex or subjective for Principal Davis to consider in his assessment of Emma ' s potential. The crushing weight of his assumptions extended beyond just Emma ' s immediate academic placement to encompass her entire future trajectory. If she was transferred to Lincoln Elementary, would she be tracked into lower level classes based on the same demographic assumptions? Would teachers there have reduced expectations for her achievement because of her family background? Would she internalize the message that she wasn ' t capable of academic success at the same level as her peers from more advantaged families? The long term implications of accepting Principal Davis ' s assessment felt enormous and potentially devastating to Emma ' s self concept and educational aspirations. Children who were labeled as academically deficient in elementary school often carried those labels throughout their educational careers, regardless of their actual abilities or potential for growth and development. The assumption that our family ' s circumstances had predetermined Emma ' s academic fate also felt like a betrayal of the American promise that education could serve as an equalizer, providing opportunities for children to transcend the limitations of their birth circumstances through hard work and determination. If schools like Riverside Elementary were allowed to exclude students based on demographic assumptions rather than individual assessment and support, then education became a mechanism for perpetuating inequality rather than addressing it. What made Principal Davis ' s assumptions particularly painful was the element of truth they contained about the challenges Emma and I faced as a result of our economic circumstances. We did have limitations that other families didn ' t face: less flexibility in our schedules, fewer resources for enrichment activities, more stress about basic necessities like housing and healthcare. But those challenges didn ' t automatically translate to educational deficits or reduced potential for academic success. The suggestion that Emma would be better served at a school with lower expectations and specialized programs for students from challenging backgrounds felt like a fundamental misunderstanding of what children like her actually needed to succeed academically. Rather than reduced expectations and segregated educational environments, she needed teachers who could recognize and build on her strengths, classrooms that valued different types of intelligence and learning styles, and a school culture that saw diversity of background and experience as an asset rather than a deficit. The crushing assumption that our family ' s circumstances had predetermined Emma ' s educational fate ignored completely the possibility that she might actually thrive in a challenging academic environment if given appropriate support and recognition. The same resilience and creativity that had helped her adapt to our unconventional family situation might actually be tremendous assets in an educational setting that knew how to channel and develop those qualities. Principal Davis ' s certainty about Emma ' s limitations based on demographic generalizations also overlooked the potential for growth and change that was fundamental to child development. Eight year old children were still developing cognitively, socially, and academically, and their current performance might not accurately predict their future potential. The assumptions being made about Emma ' s trajectory based on a few months of standardized test scores and behavioral observations seemed premature and potentially harmful to her continued development. The most crushing aspect of this entire conversation was the realization that Emma ' s educational future was being determined not by her individual abilities or potential, but by adult assumptions about what children from families like ours were capable of achieving. The systematic evaluation that Principal Davis had presented as objective and comprehensive was actually filtered through biases and preconceptions that made it impossible for him to see Emma as she truly was: a curious, creative, intelligent child who deserved the same high expectations and opportunities as her more privileged peers. As I sat in that office, absorbing the weight of Principal Davis ' s assumptions about our family and Emma ' s future, I felt a complex mixture of shame, anger, and determination that would shape everything that happened next. The shame came from recognizing how thoroughly I ' d internalized some of these same assumptions about our limitations and worthiness. The anger arose from the injustice of having my daughter ' s potential dismissed based on circumstances beyond her control. The determination grew from a fierce maternal protectiveness that refused to accept that Emma ' s story had already been written by other people ' s expectations and biases. What I didn ' t know in that moment, as I struggled to find words to respond to Principal Davis ' s devastating assessment, was that this conversation was about to take a turn that would challenge every assumption that had been made about Emma ' s abilities and our family ' s capacity to support her educational success. The crushing weight of those assumptions was about to be lifted in a way that would transform not just Emma ' s immediate educational experience, but her entire understanding of her own potential and place in the world. The systematic dismissal of Emma ' s capabilities based on demographic generalizations was about to be confronted with evidence that would force everyone in that room to reconsider their preconceptions about intelligence, potential, and the relationship between family circumstances and educational achievement. The crushing assumptions that had seemed so certain and well documented were about to crumble in the face of a truth that had been hiding in plain sight, waiting for someone to look beyond the superficial markers of disadvantage to see the real child underneath. The conversation that had begun with Principal Davis ' s confident assertions about Emma ' s limitations and our family ' s inadequacies was about to become a lesson in the danger of making assumptions about children ' s potential based on external circumstances. Rather than taking the time to understand their individual strengths, interests, and ways of engaging with the world around them, the crushing weight of those assumptions had created a moment of crisis that would ultimately become a turning point, not just for Emma ' s educational experience, but for everyone involved in making decisions about her future. The silent defense, the words I wanted to say burned in my throat like swallowed fire, each unspoken sentence carrying the weight of eight years of love, sacrifice, and determination that Principal Davis ' s assumptions had dismissed as irrelevant to Emma ' s educational potential. I sat there gripping the arms of that expensive leather chair, my knuckles white with the effort of containing responses that might have changed the entire trajectory of this conversation if I ' d possessed the confidence to voice them. What he didn ' t know, what couldn ' t be captured in his manila folder of test scores and behavioral observations, was that Emma and I had created our own curriculum of discovery that extended far beyond anything a traditional classroom could offer. Every evening after I returned from my shifts at Rosie ' s Diner, exhausted but determined, we transformed our small kitchen table into a laboratory of learning that would have impressed any educator willing to look beyond the surface of our unconventional circumstances. The math homework that Principal Davis ' s documents described as incomplete or below grade level became the foundation for real world problem solving sessions that taught Emma mathematical concepts in ways that standardized textbooks. Never could. When she struggled with multiplication tables, we turned our grocery shopping trips into practical math lessons where she calculated the cost of items, figured out which size packages offered the best value, and computed the change we should receive from our carefully budgeted purchases. The reading comprehension skills that her test scores apparently found deficient were actually being developed through our nightly ritual of sharing books from the public library where Emma had her own library card and the freedom to choose. Materials that sparked her curiosity rather than being limited to prescribed reading lists that might not match her interests or reading level. We read everything together: picture books that we analyzed for artistic technique and storytelling structure, chapter books that we discussed in depth, examining character motivation and plot development, and nonfiction texts about subjects that fascinated her. From astronomy to marine biology to ancient civilizations, the creative writing assignments that her teachers had marked as too brief or lacking in detail were only shadows of the elaborate stories Emma created at home, where she wasn ' t constrained by arbitrary word counts or forced to write about topics. That didn ' t capture her imagination. She filled notebooks with adventures featuring characters of her own invention, complex plots that wove together elements of fantasy and reality, and dialogue that demonstrated a sophisticated understanding of human nature and emotional complexity that impressed me with its depth and authenticity. What Principal Davis couldn ' t see from his position of institutional authority was the way Emma approached learning as an adventure rather than a chore, approaching each new concept or skill with the kind of enthusiasm that educators spend their careers trying to cultivate in their students. The curiosity that drove her to ask endless questions about everything she observed wasn ' t being nurtured in a classroom environment that apparently valued compliance and conformity over intellectual exploration and creative thinking. The scientific thinking skills that weren ' t being measured by standardized assessments were being developed through our weekend experiments conducted with materials we gathered from our kitchen cabinet and the dollar store. Emma had learned about density by creating layered liquids in mason jars, explored chemical reactions by mixing baking soda and vinegar in carefully controlled proportions, and investigated plant biology by growing seeds in different conditions to observe how environment ' s assessment felt enormous and potentially devastating to Emma ' s self- concept and educational aspirations. Children who were labeled as academically deficient in elementary school often carried those labels throughout their educational careers, regardless of their actual abilities or potential for growth and development. The assumption that our family ' s circumstances had predetermined Emma ' s academic fate also felt like a betrayal of the American promise that education could serve as an equalizer, providing opportunities for children to transcend the limitations of their birth circumstances through hard work and determination. If schools like Riverside Elementary were allowed to exclude students based on demographic assumptions rather than individual assessment and support, then education became a mechanism for perpetuating inequality rather than addressing it. What made Principal Davis ' s assumptions particularly painful was the element of truth they contained about the challenges Emma and I faced as a result of our economic circumstances. We did have limitations that other families didn ' t face: less flexibility in our schedules, fewer resources for enrichment activities, more stress about basic necessities like housing and health care. But those challenges didn ' t automatically translate to educational deficits or reduced potential for academic success. The suggestion that Emma would be better served at a school with lower expectations and specialized programs for students from challenging backgrounds felt like a fundamental misunderstanding of what children like her actually needed to succeed academically. Rather than reduced expectations and segregated educational environments, she needed teachers who could recognize and build on her strengths, classrooms that valued different types of intelligence and learning styles, and a school culture that saw diversity of background and experience as an asset rather than a deficit. The crushing assumption that our family ' s circumstances had predetermined Emma ' s educational fate ignored completely the possibility that she might actually thrive in a challenging academic environment if given appropriate support and recognition. The same resilience and creativity that had helped her adapt to our unconventional family situation might actually be tremendous assets in an educational setting that knew how to channel and develop those qualities. Principal Davis ' s certainty about Emma ' s limitations based on demographic generalizations also overlooked the potential for growth and change that was fundamental to child development. Eight- year- old children were still developing cognitively, socially and academically, and their current performance might not accurately predict their future potential. The assumptions being made about Emma ' s trajectory based on a few months of standardized test scores and behavioral observations seemed premature and potentially harmful to her continued development. The most crushing aspect of this entire conversation was the realization that Emma ' s educational future was being determined not by her individual abilities or potential, but by adult assumptions about what children from families like ours were capable of achieving. The systematic evaluation that Principal Davis had presented as objective and comprehensive was actually filtered through biases and preconceptions that made it impossible for him to see Emma as she truly was: a curious, creative, intelligent child who deserved the same high expectations and opportunities as her more privileged peers. As I sat in that office, absorbing the weight of Principal Davis ' s assumptions about our family and Emma ' s future, I felt a complex mixture of shame, anger, and determination that would shape everything that happened next. The shame came from recognizing how thoroughly I ' d internalized some of these same assumptions about our limitations and worthiness. The anger arose from the injustice of having my daughter ' s potential dismissed based on circumstances beyond her control. The determination grew from a fierce maternal protectiveness that refused to accept that Emma ' s story had already been written by other people ' s expectations and biases. What I didn ' t know in that moment, as I struggled to find words to respond to Principal Davis ' s devastating assessment, was that this conversation was about to take a turn that would challenge every assumption that had been made about Emma ' s abilities and our family ' s capacity to support her educational success. The crushing weight of those assumptions was about to be lifted in a way that would transform not just Emma ' s immediate educational experience, but her entire understanding of her own potential and place in the world. The systematic dismissal of Emma ' s capabilities based on demographic generalizations was about to be confronted with evidence that would force everyone in that room to reconsider their preconceptions about intelligence, potential, and the relationship between family circumstances and educational achievement. The crushing assumptions that had seemed so certain and well documented were about to crumble in the face of a truth that had been hiding in plain sight, waiting for someone to look beyond the superficial markers of disadvantage to see the real child underneath. The conversation that had begun with Principal Davis ' s confident assertions about Emma ' s limitations and our families inadequacies was about to become a lesson in the danger of making assumptions about children ' s potential based on external circumstances. Rather than taking the time to understand their individual strengths, interests, and ways of engaging with the world around them, the crushing weight of those assumptions had created a moment of crisis that would ultimately become a turning point, not just for Emma ' s educational experience, but for everyone involved in making decisions about her future. The silent defense, the words I wanted to say burned in my throat like swallowed fire, each unspoken sentence carrying the weight of eight years of love, sacrifice, and determination. that Principal Davis ' s assumptions had dismissed as irrelevant to Emma ' s educational potential. I sat there gripping the arms of that expensive leather chair, my knuckles white with the effort of containing responses that might have changed the entire trajectory of this conversation if I ' d possessed the confidence to voice them. What he didn ' t know, what couldn ' t be captured in his manila folder of test scores and behavioral observations, was that Emma and I had created our own curriculum of discovery that extended far beyond anything a traditional classroom could offer. Every evening after I returned from my shifts at Rosie ' s Diner, exhausted but determined, we transformed our small kitchen table into a laboratory of learning that would have impressed any educator willing to look beyond the surface of our unconventional circumstances. The math homework that Principal Davis ' s documents described as incomplete or below grade level became the foundation for real world problem solving sessions that taught Emma mathematical concepts in ways that standardized textbooks. Never could. When she struggled with multiplication tables, we turned our grocery shopping trips into practical math lessons where she calculated the cost of items, figured out which size packages offered the best value, and computed the change we should receive from our carefully budgeted purchases. The reading comprehension skills that her test scores apparently found deficient were actually being developed through our nightly ritual of sharing books from the public library where Emma had her own library card and the freedom to choose. materials that sparked her curiosity rather than being limited to prescribed reading lists that might not match her interests or reading level. We read everything together: picture books that we analyzed for artistic technique and storytelling structure, chapter books that we discussed in depth, examining character motivation and plot development, and nonfiction texts about subjects that fascinated her. From astronomy to marine biology to ancient civilizations, the creative writing assignments that her teachers had marked as too brief or lacking in detail were only shadows of the elaborate stories Emma created at home, where she wasn ' t constrained by arbitrary word counts or forced to write about topics. That didn ' t capture her imagination. She filled notebooks with adventures featuring characters of her own invention, complex plots that wove together elements of fantasy and reality, and dialogue that demonstrated a sophisticated understanding of human nature and emotional complexity that impressed me with its depth and authenticity. What Principal Davis couldn ' t see from his position of institutional authority was the way Emma approached learning as an adventure rather than a chore, approaching each new concept or skill with the kind of enthusiasm that educators spend their careers trying to cultivate in their students. The curiosity that drove her to ask endless questions about everything she observed wasn ' t being nurtured in a classroom environment that apparently valued compliance and conformity over intellectual exploration and creative thinking. The scientific thinking skills that weren ' t being measured by standardized assessments were being developed through our weekend experiments conducted with materials we gathered from our kitchen cabinet and the dollar store. Emma had learned about density by creating layered liquids in mason jars, explored chemical reactions by mixing baking soda and vinegar in carefully controlled proportions, and investigated plant biology by growing seeds in different conditions to observe how environmental factors affected growth and development. Her understanding of geography and social studies concepts extended far beyond what textbooks could provide because our neighborhood walks became opportunities to discuss community planning, economic systems, and cultural diversity as we observed. Different types of housing, businesses, and public spaces. Emma had developed a sophisticated understanding of how societies function by watching and questioning the world around her rather than simply memorizing facts from textbooks that might not connect to her lived experience. The art projects that filled our small apartment demonstrated a level of creativity and technical skill that wasn ' t being recognized or valued in the school environment where artistic expression was apparently limited to predetermined activities. That emphasized following directions rather than developing individual voice and vision. Emma created sculptures from recycled materials, painted murals on poster board that we hung on our walls, and designed architectural plans for imaginary buildings that showed a sophisticated understanding of space, proportion, and functionality. The organizational skills that single motherhood had required me to develop were being passed on to Emma in ways that would serve her throughout her academic career and beyond. She had learned to manage her time effectively because our schedule required careful coordination of school, homework, and household responsibilities. She understood the importance of planning ahead because our limited resources required thoughtful decision- making about priorities and expenditures. The empathy and social awareness that Principal Davis ' s behavioral assessments had failed to recognize were being developed through our interactions with people from diverse backgrounds in our neighborhood and community. Emma had learned to communicate with people of different ages, cultures, and socio- economic circumstances because our daily life brought us into contact with a broader range of humanity than many children from more insular environments ever encountered. The resilience and adaptability that weren ' t being measured by standardized tests were strengths that Emma had developed through navigating the challenges and uncertainties that came with our family situation. She had learned to find solutions to problems independently, to remain optimistic in the face of setbacks, and to appreciate opportunities because she understood they weren ' t guaranteed or unlimited. The work ethic that would serve Emma throughout. Her academic career was being developed through her observation of my commitment to providing for our family despite the challenges we faced. She had learned that effort and persistence could overcome obstacles, that goals were achieved through consistent work rather than natural talent alone, and that education was valuable precisely because it required dedication and sacrifice to obtain. The critical thinking skills that weren ' t being captured by multiple choice assessments were being developed through our discussions of everything from current events to moral dilemmas to practical problem solving situations that arose in our daily lives. Emma had learned to analyze information, consider multiple perspectives, and form her own opinions based on evidence and reasoning rather than simply accepting what authority figures told her was correct. What Principal Davis couldn ' t understand from his position of professional authority was that Emma ' s educational experience at home was actually more individualized, more responsive to her specific interests and learning style, and more connected to real world applications than what she was receiving in a classroom environment that seemed designed for students who learned in predictable ways and came from predictable backgrounds. The scaffolded learning that education experts recommended was happening naturally in our home environment where Emma could build on her strengths and interests rather than being forced to conform to a one size fits all approach that might not match her developmental needs or learning preferences. The differentiated instruction that schools claimed to provide was actually occurring more effectively in our kitchen table classroom where lessons could be adapted instantly to match Emma ' s. understanding and engagement level. The authentic assessment that educators discussed in their professional development sessions was taking place continuously in our daily interactions where Emma ' s understanding was evaluated through her ability to apply concepts to real situations rather than through her performance on standardized tests that might not accurately reflect her knowledge or abilities. The collaborative learning that was supposedly happening in group projects at school was actually occurring more meaningfully in our home environment where Emma and I worked together as partners in her educational journey rather than her being one of many students competing for attention and resources in an overcrowded classroom. The cultural responsiveness that schools claim to value was actually being provided more effectively in our home environment where Emma ' s individual background and experiences were acknowledged and built upon rather than being seen as deficits that needed to be overcome or ignored. What burned most intensely in my throat as I sat in Principal Davis ' s office was the knowledge that Emma ' s educational experience at home was actually more aligned with best practices in education than what she was receiving in a school environment. That seemed more focused on standardization and compliance than on nurturing individual potential and creativity. The personalized learning that technology companies were spending millions of dollars to develop artificially was happening naturally in our home environment where Emma ' s education was truly customized to her interests, abilities, and learning. style rather than being delivered through a one size fits all approach that might not serve her individual needs. The project- based learning that progressive educators advocated was a daily reality in our home environment where Emma worked on extended investigations of topics that captured her curiosity rather than completing worksheets and exercises that might not connect to her interests or help her develop deeper understanding. The social emotional learning that schools were beginning to recognize as important was being addressed more comprehensively in our home environment where Emma ' s emotional development was supported through consistent, caring relationships rather than through scripted programs that might not address her individual needs and experiences. The STEM education that was supposedly being provided at Riverside Elementary was actually happening more effectively in our home environment where Emma could pursue hands- on investigations and experiments that connected to her interests rather than being limited to predetermined activities that might not match her curiosity or developmental level. What I couldn ' t say, what Principal Davis ' s assumptions had made impossible to articulate, was that Emma ' s educational experience was actually richer, more individualized, and more effective than what most children received in traditional school. environments. The limitations he saw in our circumstances were actually strengths that had allowed us to create a learning environment that was more responsive to Emma ' s individual needs than any classroom could be. The silence that filled Principal Davis ' s office as I struggled to find words to respond to his devastating assessment was pregnant with all the evidence that could have challenged his assumptions about Emma ' s potential and our family ' s capacity to support her education. The unspoken defense that burned in my throat contained years of proof that love, creativity, and determination could create educational opportunities that transcended economic limitations and traditional family structures. But the intimidating environment of that office, the weight of institutional authority, and my own internalized doubts about my worth as an advocate for my daughter had combined to silence me at the very moment when Emma needed me to speak up on her behalf. The crushing assumptions that Principal Davis had presented as objective facts had created a moment of crisis that would require more than words to overcome. The silent defense that I carried in my heart but couldn ' t voice in that moment contained the truth that would eventually emerge to challenge every assumption that had been made about Emma ' s abilities and our family ' s worthiness. The evidence of her intelligence, creativity, and potential was real and substantial, but it would take an intervention from an unexpected source to bring it into the light where it could no longer be ignored or dismissed. The words I didn ' t say in Principal Davis ' s office that day carried the weight of a mother ' s love and a child ' s potential that refused to be diminished by other people ' s expectations and biases. The silent defense that burned in my throat would eventually find its voice, but not in the way any of us could have predicted or prepared for. The knock on Principal Davis ' s office door came at the exact moment when I thought the conversation had reached its devastating conclusion. The sound was gentle but insistent, and Misses Morrison ' s voice carried through the heavy wood with an apologetic tone that suggested she wouldn ' t normally interrupt such an important meeting unless the circumstances were truly exceptional. Principal Davis, I am terribly sorry to disturb you, but there is someone here who says it ' s urgent that she speak with you about Emma Carter immediately. The formality in Misses Morrison ' s voice indicated that whoever was requesting this interruption carried enough authority or credibility to warrant serious consideration, even during a scheduled parent conference. Principal Davis ' s expression shifted from mild annoyance to curious concern as he glanced at his appointment calendar, clearly, trying to remember if he ' d scheduled another meeting related to Emma ' s case that might have slipped his mind. The interruption seemed to catch him off guard, disrupting the methodical presentation he ' d been delivering about Emma ' s academic deficiencies and the school ' s recommendations for her educational future. Who is it, Misses Morrison? He asked, his voice carrying the slight irritation of someone whose carefully orchestrated meeting was being disrupted by an unexpected variable. The manila folder containing Emma ' s academic records remained spread across his desk, a visual reminder of all the evidence he ' d just finished presenting to support his conclusions about her unsuitability for Riverside Elementary ' s academic program. It ' s Doctor Jennifer Walsh from the district ' s advanced learning department, Misses Morrison replied through the closed door. She says she has information about Emma Carter that needs to be discussed immediately, and she ' s requested that Misses Carter remain present for the conversation. The mention of the advanced learning department created a moment of confusion that was almost palpable in the suddenly tense atmosphere of Principal Davis ' s office. The juxtaposition between the academic struggles we ' d been discussing and the arrival of someone from a department focused on gifted and talented students seemed impossible to reconcile, like two completely different conversations about two entirely different children. Doctor Walsh entered the office with the confident bearing of someone accustomed to being taken seriously in educational settings. She was a woman in her early fifties with kind but sharp eyes that took in the scene immediately. The scattered documents on Principal Davis ' s desk, my obvious discomfort in the leather chair, and the general atmosphere of a difficult conversation that had been interrupted at a crucial moment. I apologize for the unexpected interruption, Doctor Walsh began, addressing both Principal Davis and me with equal respect and attention. But I ' ve just received some information about Emma Carter that I believe changes the entire context of any decisions being made about her educational placement. She carried a tablet computer and a leather portfolio that she placed carefully on Principal Davis ' s desk, moving some of Emma ' s academic records aside to make space for her own materials. The deliberate nature of her actions suggested that whatever she was about to present would require careful attention and consideration from everyone in the room. I ' m not sure I understand, Principal Davis said, his voice carrying a mixture of professional courtesy and underlying skepticism. Emma Carter is here for a placement conference due to academic and behavioral concerns that have been well documented over the past several months. I ' m not aware of any involvement from the advanced learning department. Doctor Walsh nodded with understanding, but her expression suggested that she was about to provide information that would challenge the assumptions underlying that placement conference. That ' s exactly why I ' m here, Principal Davis. Sometimes our most gifted students are the ones who appear to be struggling in traditional classroom environments, particularly when their intellectual needs aren ' t being recognized or addressed appropriately. The word gifted hung in the air like a foreign concept that didn ' t belong in the same conversation where Emma ' s academic deficiencies had just been so thoroughly documented and analyzed. The cognitive dissonance between the struggling student described in Principal Davis ' s reports and the possibility that she might actually be intellectually advanced seemed impossible to reconcile. I ' m afraid there ' s been some mistake, Principal Davis said, gesturing toward the academic record spread across his desk. Emma ' s test scores, behavioral assessments, and classroom performance all indicate a student who is struggling to meet grade level expectations, not someone who would qualify for advanced learning services. Doctor Walsh smiled with the patience of someone who had encountered this kind of confusion many times before in her career. That ' s actually more common than you might think, Principal Davis. What we call twice exceptional, or hidden gifted, students often present as underperforming in traditional assessment situations while demonstrating exceptional abilities in other contexts. She opened her tablet and turned it toward us, revealing what appeared to be a video recording that had been taken in an unfamiliar setting. The quality was good enough to clearly show Emma sitting at a table with several other children, but the environment looked nothing like a typical classroom or school setting. This footage was taken last Saturday at the Maplewood Community Center during their weekend enrichment program for elementary students, Doctor Walsh explained. Emma has been attending these sessions for the past six weeks, and her performance there has been quite remarkable. The video began to play, and I watched in amazement as my daughter appeared on the screen, leading a discussion with a group of children who appeared to be older than her. She was explaining a complex engineering concept using materials that looked like they came from a robotics kit, her voice clear and confident as she demonstrated how different mechanical components work together to create motion and force. The children in this group ranged from fourth through sixth grade, Doctor Walsh continued as we watched Emma guide her teammates through the construction of what appeared to be a sophisticated mechanical device. Emma is not only keeping up with their discussions, she ' s often leading them and introducing concepts that the older students haven ' t considered. Principal Davis leaned forward in his chair, his expression shifting from skepticism to genuine surprise as he watched Emma demonstrate a level of engagement and intellectual sophistication that bore no resemblance to the struggling student described. in her school records. The contrast was so stark that it seemed like we were watching a completely different child. How did she come to be involved in this program? Principal Davis asked, his professional curiosity beginning to override his initial resistance to reconsidering Emma ' s academic profile. The community center ' s stem coordinator, Doctor Martinez, identified Emma during one of their open workshop sessions, Doctor Walsh explained, pausing the video to focus our attention on her explanation. He noticed that she was asking questions and making observations that demonstrated advanced spatial reasoning and mechanical understanding, so he invited her to join this more advanced group. I felt a mixture of pride and confusion as I absorbed this information. Emma had never mentioned attending any special program at the community center, and I wasn ' t even aware that she ' d been going there during the hours when I thought she was at the regular after school care program. The realization that she ' d been participating in advanced learning activities without my knowledge created a complex emotional response that combined maternal pride with concern about what else I might not know about my daughter ' s experiences and abilities. The most interesting aspect of Emma ' s participation in this program, Doctor Walsh continued, is that her performance there demonstrates exactly the kind of advanced thinking and problem- solving abilities that we look for in candidates for our gifted education services. Her approach to complex challenges, her ability to synthesize information from multiple sources, and her natural leadership qualities are all indicators of exceptional intellectual potential. She scrolled through additional video footage that showed Emma working independently on projects that appeared far more sophisticated than anything I ' d seen in her regular homework assignments. The concentration and focus she displayed while working on these challenging tasks contrasted sharply with the descriptions of distraction and disengagement that had been documented in her classroom behavioral assessments. What you ' re seeing here, Doctor Walsh explained, is what we call optimal challenge level. When gifted students are presented with material that matches their intellectual abilities and interests, they demonstrate engagement, persistence, and achievement that can be quite remarkable. However, when those same students are placed in environments where the academic demands are below their capability level, they often appear bored, distracted, or even disruptive. The implications of her explanation began to sink in, as I realized that Emma ' s classroom struggles might not indicate academic deficiency, but rather the opposite, intellectual needs that weren ' t being met by grade level curriculum and teaching methods designed for typically developing students. Principal Davis was studying the video footage with intense concentration, clearly trying to reconcile what he was seeing with everything he thought he knew about Emma ' s academic abilities and potential. The evidence before him was challenging, fundamental assumptions that had shaped his recommendations for her educational future. Doctor Walsh, he said carefully, I need to understand how this information relates to Emma ' s documented performance in the classroom. Her teacher reports, test scores, and behavioral assessments all indicate a student who is struggling significantly, with grade level expectations. Doctor Walsh nodded with understanding, clearly prepared for this question. That ' s exactly the pattern we see with hidden gifted students, Principal Davis. Traditional assessments often fail to capture their Doctor Walsh, he said carefully, I need to understand how this information relates to Emma ' s documented performance in the classroom. Her teacher reports, test scores, and behavioral assessments all indicate a student who is struggling significantly, with grade level expectations. Doctor Walsh nodded with understanding, clearly prepared for this question. That ' s exactly the pattern we see with hidden gifted students, Principal Davis. Traditional assessments often fail to capture their true abilities because these children may not perform well in testing situations that don ' t engage their interests or challenge their intellect appropriately. She pulled out a folder from her portfolio and opened it to reveal what appeared to be alternative assessment results that painted a completely different picture of Emma ' s intellectual abilities. The numbers and percentile rankings on these documents were dramatically different from those in Principal Davis ' s manila folder, suggesting academic performance at levels far above what her regular classroom assessments had indicated. These are results from assessment tools specifically designed to identify gifted students who may not perform well on traditional measures, Doctor Walsh explained. Emma ' s scores in areas like creative problem solving, spatial reasoning, and abstract thinking are all in the ninety eighth percentile or higher. The contrast between these results and the below grade level performance documented in Emma ' s school records was so extreme that it seemed like they must be describing different children entirely. The possibility that both sets of data could be accurate required a fundamental reconceptualization of how Emma ' s mind worked and what kind of educational environment she needed to thrive. Furthermore, Doctor Walsh continued, Emma has completed several independent projects during her time. In the community center program that demonstrate remarkable creativity and advanced thinking skills, she designed and built a water filtration system using recyclable materials, created a detailed plan for making playground equipment more accessible to children with disabilities, and wrote and illustrated a story that incorporates scientific concepts in ways that would be impressive for students several grade levels higher. Each example she provided challenged another assumption that had been made about Emma ' s academic abilities and potential. The child who had been described as struggling with grade level expectations was apparently capable of work that exceeded those expectations by significant margins when placed in an environment that recognized and nurtured her intellectual gifts. I ' d like to recommend, Doctor Walsh said, addressing both Principal Davis and me, that Emma be evaluated immediately for placement in our district ' s gifted education program. Based on what I ' ve observed and the assessments we ' ve conducted, I believe she would benefit significantly from advanced academic challenges and specialized instruction designed for intellectually gifted students. The room fell silent as the weight of this recommendation settled over the conversation that had begun with discussions of transferring Emma to a school with lower academic expectations and specialized support for struggling students. The complete reversal of perspective required everyone present to reconsider fundamental assumptions about Emma ' s abilities, needs, and educational future. Principal Davis looked back and forth between the academic records spread across his desk and the evidence that Doctor Walsh had presented, clearly struggling to integrate two completely contradictory assessments of the same child. The professional certainty with which he ' d delivered his earlier conclusions about Emma ' s limitations had been replaced by obvious confusion and the need to reassess everything he thought he knew about her academic profile. I think, he said slowly, that we need to schedule a comprehensive reevaluation of Emma ' s educational needs and placement options. Doctor Walsh, would you be willing to coordinate a complete assessment process that takes into account both the concerns that brought us here today and the potential that you ' ve identified? Doctor Walsh agreed immediately, and over the next few minutes, they began to outline a plan for comprehensive testing that would examine Emma ' s abilities from multiple perspectives and in various contexts. The conversation that had begun with recommendations for transfer to a less demanding school had transformed into discussions of advanced academic opportunities and specialized programming for intellectually gifted students. As I sat in that office, absorbing the dramatic shift in how Emma ' s educational future was being discussed, I felt a complex mixture of emotions that included relief, vindication, confusion, and something that might have been anger at how close we ' d come to accepting a completely inaccurate assessment of my daughter ' s potential. The assumptions that had seemed so certain and well documented just minutes earlier had been revealed as fundamentally flawed, based on assessment methods and educational approaches that failed to recognize the different ways that intellectual giftedness could manifest in young children. Three weeks later, I found myself sitting in a very different kind of meeting in the Maplewood School District ' s central office boardroom. The comprehensive evaluation that Doctor Walsh had coordinated had confirmed her initial assessment. Emma was indeed intellectually gifted, with abilities that placed her in the top two percent of students her age in multiple academic areas. The school board meeting that evening was packed with parents, teachers, and community members who had come to hear about the district ' s plans for improving identification and support of gifted students, particularly those from backgrounds that might make their abilities less obvious in traditional school settings. Emma and I sat in the front row, having been invited to participate in a presentation about the importance of comprehensive assessment and alternative identification methods. School board chairman Doctor Robert Thompson called the meeting to order and began by acknowledging the district ' s commitment to ensuring that all students, regardless of their background or circumstances, had access to educational opportunities that matched their abilities and potential. His words carried special meaning for me, given how close Emma had come to being denied those opportunities based on assumptions about what children from families like ours were capable of achieving. Tonight, Doctor Thompson announced, we ' re going to hear from a young lady who has helped our district understand the importance of looking beyond traditional measures of academic achievement to identify and nurture intellectual giftedness in all its forms. Emma Carter, would you please come to the podium? Emma stood and walked confidently to the front of the room, carrying a presentation folder that contained examples of the work she ' d completed during her assessment process. She looked small behind the large podium, but her voice was clear and strong as she began to speak to the room full of adults who had come to hear her story. My name is Emma Carter, and I ' m eight years old, she began. A month ago, my school wanted to transfer me to a different school because they thought I wasn ' t smart enough to stay at Riverside Elementary. Today, I ' m here to talk about my acceptance into the district ' s advanced learning program and the projects I ' ve been working on that will help other kids like me. The irony of the situation wasn ' t lost on anyone in that room. The child who had been deemed unsuitable for Riverside Elementary ' s academic program was now being presented as an example of the kind of intellectual potential that the district needed to work harder to identify and develop. Emma ' s presentation included descriptions of the accessibility playground she had designed, complete with detailed drawings and explanations of how different features would accommodate children with various physical and cognitive needs. She explained the water filtration system she had built and tested, demonstrating her understanding of scientific principles that impressed the adults in the audience with their sophistication and practical application. When she finished her presentation, the room erupted in applause that lasted several minutes. School board chairman Thompson returned to the podium and announced that the district would be implementing new identification procedures for gifted students, establishing partnerships with community organizations to provide alternative assessment opportunities, and creating scholarship funds to ensure that all gifted students had access to enrichment programs regardless of their families. Economic circumstances. Furthermore, Doctor Thompson said, we will be naming our new advanced learning center the Emma Carter Center for Educational Excellence in recognition of the important lesson she has taught our entire district about the danger of underestimating any child ' s potential based on superficial circumstances rather than taking the time to understand their individual strengths and abilities. The months that followed transformed not just Emma ' s educational experience, but our entire understanding of what was possible when a child ' s true abilities were recognized and nurtured appropriately. Emma thrived in the advanced learning program, working on projects that challenged her intellect and creativity in ways that regular classroom assignments never had. Her confidence grew as she found herself in an environment where her questions were welcomed, her curiosity was encouraged, and her different way of thinking was valued as an asset rather than a problem to be corrected. The experience also changed my own relationship with Emma ' s education and my role as her advocate. The near miss with Principal Davis ' s recommendations taught me the importance of trusting my own observations and insights about my daughter, even when they conflicted with professional assessments from authority figures. I learned to ask questions, seek second opinions, and insist that Emma be seen as an individual rather than a representative of demographic categories that might not capture her unique abilities and potential. Today, Emma is thriving academically and personally in ways that might never have been possible if we had accepted the initial assessment of her abilities and potential. She continues to work on projects that combine her intellectual gifts with her natural empathy and desire to solve problems that matter to real people. The playground design that she presented to the school board has been incorporated into plans for three new elementary schools in the district, ensuring that hundreds of children will benefit from her innovative thinking about inclusive design. The story of what happened in Principal Davis ' s office that day serves as a reminder that children ' s potential cannot be determined by standardized assessments, demographic assumptions, or superficial observations of their behavior and environments that may not match their learning needs. Emma ' s journey from struggling student to recognized intellectual gift illustrates the importance of comprehensive evaluation, alternative assessment methods, and the willingness to challenge preconceptions about what different children are capable of achieving. The assumptions that nearly derailed Emma ' s educational future were based on real limitations and how schools identify and support gifted students, particularly those from backgrounds that don ' t fit traditional expectations about academic achievement and family support. The experience taught everyone involved, Principal Davis, Emma ' s teachers, district administrators, and community members about the complexity of intellectual giftedness and the need for more sophisticated approaches to recognizing and nurturing exceptional abilities in all children. But perhaps most importantly, Emma ' s story demonstrates the power of one child ' s authentic voice and demonstrated abilities to challenge an entire system ' s assumptions about potential, achievement, and the relationship between family circumstances and educational success. The eight year old girl who walked into that boardroom and calmly presented her work to a room full of adults proved that intelligence, creativity, and leadership can emerge from the most unexpected places when we take the time to look beyond surface appearances and really see the children in front of us. The transformation of Emma ' s educational experience from near failure to recognized excellence happened not because her abilities changed, but because the adults responsible for her education finally learned to see those abilities clearly. The potential was always there, waiting to be recognized and nurtured by people willing to look beyond assumptions and stereotypes to discover the unique gifts that every child possesses. Up next, you ' ve got two more standout stories right on your screen. If this one hit the mark, you won ' t want to pass these up. Just click and check them out.